Thank you, brother. Alright, so I know I was doing alright, but... I ain't hit the highway. I think it was like nine thirty when I hit the highway to come down here. And I was keeping my fingers crossed, praying there was no traffic. Like, was it traffic? Smooth sailing, but yeah. Sometimes on eighty-seven on the Deegan, you don't know till you turn that corner on two thirty-three and hit that corner. So until you hit that corner, it's wide open. So until you hit that corner, you're like... Yeah. God, all the way to Ford Road. And then that one to the George Washington Bridge is another special, if you like. But it was a smooth sailing. Which I'm glad about this. Had my fingers crossed, like, please, God, don't do it to me.
Good, good. This morning, the director of us, because one of our assistants, who tries to keep the time to five minutes for everyone, asked away Wadi, who would be on the side, aside, and speak to you and say he only have two minutes. He only has one minute. Uh, he transitioned, uh, a few days ago, and it was unexpected. So, um, so this morning, we're gonna do a tribute to Wadi. Harlem Week, Impact Laboratory Theater, Harlem Arts Alliance, New Heritage Theater, or some of the groups that he worked with on a regular basis. I wanna thank Alethea Brown for the photo that you'll see shortly. And we're going to do a musical tribute to Wadi to start off our meeting. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce you. When you've seen him before, he's a Harlem, uh, Arts Alliance member. To come for a cruise angel for the tribute to Wadi.
Good morning, everyone. My name is John Eric Scutches, and it's an honor and a privilege to be here with you all today. Um, let's just give it up for Andrew Cruz, one more time, please. Yes. Wow. Wadi was, is, um, amazing artist, amazing stage manager, technician. Uh, working with him was a pleasure. And, um, yeah, just carry on his energy with me. So I'm here to give you some of the ground rules for today. Um, and Wadi will be here in spirit to help us out, that everyone has five minutes. So, uh, and if you, and if you start going over your time, I'll be sitting here and I'll go like this, and then I'll go like that, okay? So it's like this and like that. Alright, and, um, yeah, and if you can all just turn on this, or just put them on buzz, you can keep them on, but if you just put them on silence, that'd be great. And, um, I'd just like to say, um, really quickly, uh, we'll do two more things. Is that we keep saying that we're living in really rough times right now, and I guess that is so, cuz it's, um, what we're saying, but what I'm realizing is that we have to remember to, um, be really strategic and really intentional about being kind to ourselves and being kind to one another. I found myself, um, last week going, having one of those days and being disrespectful to a colleague. And that wasn't kind at all. And, um, she's an amazing person. And, and I didn't wanna put it on, oh, I was having one of those days. I wanna put it on, I wanna take the responsibility to be a kinder person on this planet, so that's what I'm really giving out. And so, yeah. And, um, also, I just wanna say, uh, give praises and thanks always to Rosa Rivers, who gave me a space and an opportunity to have space, to be an artist, uh, to be by his side, to get to know him. And it's one of those days when you get to know the giants that you love and appreciate and respect. And then you find out they're even are more bigger and more beautiful than that you could imagine. So I just wanna say thank you, Rosa. So I'm just gonna ask everybody to take everything off their laps, if you may, and just relax and just bring yourself into the space. You can keep your eyes open or close your eyes, just take a deep breath in. Let it go. And we're gonna honor this breath, we're gonna honor this moment for Wadi today. And we give all praises and thanks to the ancestors, Ashen. And so, uh, next is the Senior Director for Strategic Partnership and Community Outreach for Harlem School of the Arts, Vanessa Clark.
Good morning. Morning, got me a little motion. So rubbing you with the ice cream.
Yeah, let it out, it's okay.
Sorry.
Good morning, queen.
Welcome back to Injuste. For those of you who are joining us from towards time. Um, we're an after-school program, offering music, musical theater, media design classes. We're proud to be one. Sure, sorry. Does that matter?
We love you.
The start of... Didn't mean to break everybody down. It's probably been a long wait, yeah, right? Okay, so we're proud to offer not only arts education, but also a safe and support space where our children of our community can explore the potential, their potential and build their confidence. We invite you to Injuste. And some really exciting events are coming up. One of the exciting events that are coming up are our Splash of Spring event, which is May thirty-first, eleven AM to four PM. We're gonna offer a few free art workshops and mini performances and some... Next up is one performance that I'm excited to be part of is Once on this Island, that is June thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. Get your tickets now. Once on this Island is kind of like a Juliet, Romeo and Juliet kind of love story set on an island of the Dominican Republic. So I'm excited for that one, it's June thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. Get your tickets. I believe on our website, if you want to get some tickets, you can scan the bars, G P codes that, um, are posted up on the walls. On the next up, Summer Camp, we're trying to really get our Summer Camp program running up, up and running, that starts July first and ends August fifteenth. We're accepting kids ages five through twelve. Um, and if you attend the Spring Splash event on the thirty-first of May, you'll get some of the cool promos, but don't stress, we do offer financially for all our programming, I think many people know that, for financially, things of else for all our programming. And that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So I'd like to take a moment before I go on, just to give thanks to Lenny Parker, who works for us for New Heritage Theater, and to for the woman who puts this all together and makes it happen, uh, T J Templechain, the mix. So I'd like to invite up the founder and president for the New York African Horse Ensemble, Ms. Joyce Adawome. And, um, Joyce is not here. So we're gonna invite up the director for Harlem Swing Dance Society, Barbara Jones.
Good morning, everybody. Alright, I am with the nonprofit, the Harlem Swing Dance Society, and what we do is promote, present, and protect Harlem's most famous dance, the Lindy Hop. And it's Harlem on. And we do this by offering presentations, free lessons on Tuesday nights, and we collaborate with folks in the community like you to bring awareness. Now, many, well, maybe a few, do remember back in the day where you had to take square dancing in school? Well, we wanna change that script. What we wanna do is offer in the summer, a Lindy Hop experience, especially for our young people. And this year, it's going to run from July eighth to August fifteenth. We've been working on this for the last four years. And we work with, uh, many, um, schools and summer camps. Last year, matter of fact, we were right here in Harlem School of the Arts, we had this whole room filled with young people. And they got to taste the Lindy Hop. Uh, we've also worked with Hansborough with their summer day camp, and we've worked with the Caribbean Cultural Center on One Twenty-Fifth Street. So we'd love to work with you and have you friends here, tell your friends that we offer this program, it's only one hour. And the kids get to see old film clips, and they get to try to dance not only to old jazz, but also to new music, which they're unaware of. And, um, for the most part, they're not aware of this culture because it's not taught enough schools here in Harlem. So that's again, the reason why the Harlem Swing Dance Society was established. So with the community support, we'd love for this to happen this year. In order for our culture to live and to breathe, it has to be passed down. And then we see some high school students doing a dance, doing some old jazz steps, to do music and old music. In fact, this class here is all girls, that they got into it and had some fun. So we've done this program in classrooms, we've done in big halls like this, we've done them outside. And again, it's only an hour of breath of time, they see, they get to ask questions, and they get to have a little bit of fun and knowledge of, again, the culture that is almost a hundred years old, the Lindy Hop. You figure, why would you wanna be interested in a hundred year old dance? Well, there's people still doing this dance all over the world. And since it's a Harlem staple and we're trying to keep things in Harlem and grow them, this is what we try to do every summer. Now sadly, there is an element here in Harlem that is trying to push our youth to go to Boston and out of state to learn this dance. And we think that's ridiculous because that's Boston. Why not do it right here in the area? This is, uh, before they went through the, uh, renovation about a year ago. Okay, so we have some cards in the back. One that looks like this, but if this is on, you can take this one for the Tuesday night class, it has our phone number and our email address, and you can contact us again about having our youth have the summer Lindy Hop experience. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I'm gonna, uh, invite up two presenters, please. Um, the Gi, uh, the Chair Board of Children's Art Carnival, Michael Huntek, and the VP Board of Trustees, Wayne Benjamin. Can you please come up and present?
Good morning. It's a small crowd this morning, and I have to tell you, you always take a few minutes. You know, I don't like delivering with other people, so I gotta weigh it out a little bit. But I always spend a few minutes talking issues of advocacy. And, uh, we were, uh, I was saying last week, it's a small crowd this morning. Each one has to bring one, so you know, next time you come, make sure you bring somebody. Come on now. Come on. We should be filling this room. We should be filling all the rooms in Harlem. So I wanted to take a few minutes. Don't give me any signals to thank Rosa, to honor Wadi, and to talk very briefly about the ancestors that any moment we could all become part of. So let's just keep that in mind. As John was saying, be kind to yourself, treat yourself well, and obviously you have to treat others well. We're in Harlem, and on my way here, I live right up the street, really, and on my way here, I've exchanged greetings, I assure most of you do, with my neighbors, whether I know them or not. And that's Harlem, and that's the tradition that we have to maintain, that's all about our self-care and the self-care of our neighbors. Uh, I'm here actually to talk about the children's art carnival. Wayne is here because we're both on the board of the, um, Morris Jamel Catches, and we've been talking a bit about that. At C A C, this is gonna be very brief, I said I don't have a pre, oh, maybe I do. Is there a, no, I don't have a presentation about C A C. But I wanted to invite all of you, as I did last time last month, to the C A C to participate in our workshops. There's a card on the table, we have workshops, uh, all, uh, weekly, uh, imprint making, drawing, watercolor, crochet, mixed media. We have a black and white darkroom, which nobody ever can find anymore, and, um, a, uh, artist writing, uh, online artist writing workshop. The space is getting better every day, and we want you to come and enjoy it. Right now, we are, uh, speaking of the ancestors, part of what we are trying to do at the carnival, uh, because we have such a, a long legacy of, uh, activity and artwork. Uh, we were founded by the great artist Betty Bladen Taylor, and we are trying to continue her legacy at the townhouse. She left the organization and be owned, which is right up the hill, uh, on a class, we're a classroom, uh, Harlem Townhouse on, uh, historic block, and you should come and enjoy. Right now, doing the, uh, exhibition of We Use See, which will close at the end of this, next weekend. And, uh, so please come, there are postcards in the back, please come check it out. That's all about the We Use See artists who broke ground, around the time that this place, the Harlem School of the Arts was founded, and many of our other work, uh, great institutions were founded through the Black Arts Movement. And we are honoring them, we have a fantastic exhibition, we're partnering with the Hamilton Landmark Galleries. So come out over the last, uh, week or so of the exhibition and, and check us out. Uh, now, the only other thing I can say before Wayne gets started, before we both get started, is to talk about, uh, very quickly about the rough times that John mentioned, we are in rough times. Anybody that gets enrollment funds from, uh, uh, the National Museum of the Arts, which I don't know how many of us are in that category, we are not. They were all rescinded in the past couple of weeks, and it's a basically a horrific situation is going on, it's gonna damage many of our institutions and many of our, uh, arts organizations, so, uh, all I have to say about that, cuz at this moment, we're just trying to figure out how to respond. We need all the voices to make a response. But we also want to point out the funders, our local funders, that are holding tight and standing up for us, uh, like, uh, Harlem Community Development Agency, West Harlem, uh, Community Development Agency, uh, and U M S, uh, to name a few. They're standing tough, our money is still there, uh, so we have to honor them and support them and, and try to be, uh, active and advocates for the arts and culture in our community, or else, as Donald Trump would say, you won't have a community. So there you go. Wayne?
Thank you, Mike. So I, I just wanna, uh, reiterate something that Mike said, there, there is so much going on uptown, these are the arts, and in some instances, it's well-attended, in other instances, not, so I would encourage everyone to spread the word on the events that you're involved with, that you know about, so that we get much broader audiences and much broader participation, um, cuz that strengthens the artists and the organizations who are doing that. Um, as I mentioned, my name's Wayne Benjamin, I am the Vice President of the Board of Trustees of the Morris Jamel Mansion. Um, Rosa has been very kind to invite M J M to speak a couple of times. Mr. Jamel Mansion is the oldest surviving house in Manhattan. In twenty twenty-five, this year, we are celebrating our two hundred and sixtieth anniversary. No, I was not there when it was built, don't get cute. Two things that I wanna bring your attention to, Morris Jamel. In about a month from now, June fourteenth, we're opening an exhibit called What the House Saw. So we're using that two hundred and sixty years as the lens through which we're viewing various, you know, important points in history. So the roof, the house is already set up as period rooms, but now there'll be exhibits that will speak to the Revolutionary War, to the Harlem Renaissance, to the Civil Rights Movement, and that exhibit will be up from June through the end of the year. But it doesn't mean the exhibit closes then, because as you know, next year is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the country, so we're ten years older than the country. So the plan is to expand our exhibit on our two sixtieth to also celebrate the two fifty, that will give us the opportunity to expand the exhibit that we worked on in a very short period of time to get it ready for the middle of June. One of the many lives of the houses after the Revolutionary War, it was a tavern, which a lot of people don't know. So in July, we have an event called Tavern Night, which basically celebrates the life of the mansion as a tavern, it's one of our fundraisers, so we encourage you to be there, get your tickets, uh, there are sponsorship opportunities, Curtis. And, uh, there are flyers in the back that give you information on that. Normally, July would be when we hold our annual gala. We've shifted the annual gala to September, and we'll have more information on that. Uh, but we wanted to have a smaller, more informal activity, and celebrating the life of the mansion, you know, as a tavern is a great way to do that, to break summertime. to break summertime activity. So once again, flyers in the back, information on the back of the flyer for sponsorship opportunities. If you're not able to be a sponsor, if you are in touch with those who can be sponsors, please share that. And we look forward to seeing you up at the oldest house in Manhattan. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have two people coming up. And our partners at West Harlem Development Corporation. So welcome Joanne Castro, who's the Director of Programming, and the Director of Strategic Projects, Emma Saquille Pio. Hey, you can come up, please. We use this one, Pio. You sure? All right.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. Thank you all so much for being here this morning. Thank you, John, for that wonderful introduction. Boza and TJ for always putting together such an amazing program. To HAA, we always are honored for you to have us. And thank you HSA for making this space available as well. For those of you who are not familiar with the West Harlem Development Corporation, I'd like to introduce myself briefly. My name is Emma Saquille Pio. I am the Special Project Coordinator. And I'm here today with Joanna Castro, who's the Director of Programming. Together, we help sponsor and organize special projects in West Harlem and also fund West Harlem-based nonprofits doing work in the community. And to that, I want to go ahead and welcome everyone to check out our upcoming, our upcoming 2025 Community-Based Grant QR Code for more information on how to apply. Tell us more about that.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Okay, nice. So again, my name is Joanna Castro. I'm the Director of Programs at the West Harlem Development Corporation. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. And a quick shout out to Boza, who is one of the honorees of the Uptown Arts Stroll. So I hope that you're all going to the Arts Stroll next week and honor Boza as well as the other honorees. So as Emma mentioned, we have the grant cycle out. So you can check out our website, westharlemdc.org. If you have any questions, you can email grants@westharlemdc.org. I see a few familiar faces here. I think you can vouch for us that we are, we strive to be very responsive. And that's actually the best way to communicate with us. Just launched it, so this is the first official. These, this coming Tuesday, May 27th, we're having our info session. So this is going to be a super concise, hopefully in less than five minutes. For the full-length presentation, we invite you to register through Eventbrite for the hour-long presentation. The programming must take place between July 1st, 2025, and June 30th, 2026. We expect, as we've done in years past, to announce recipients in September and soon after, make that first installment. Next slide, please. So the key points, we're continuing the funding that we have in previous years. So the, in terms of our grant amount, so it will continue to be between 5,000 and 30,000. At least 75% of the beneficiaries must be West Harlem residents for an organization based outside of the community. Please detail a track record with West Harlem organizations. No LLCs, unfortunately, no individual artists, so only 501(c)(3)s can apply. You will need to have your updated information either through the New York State Charities Bureau or Candid and/or ProPublica, general liability insurance, and be ADA compliant. Again, here's the QR code. Last but not least, the priority areas, again, continue from last year. Arts and culture and youth, by the way, are about half of our grantees. So we know, understand that arts is a key component of our applicants and grantees. The other priority areas, economic and welfare preservation, and older adults. So you would only pick one priority area that best describes your project. You will also have the option for a sub-priority area. Again, the email for any questions, grants@westharlemdc.org. Now, Emma will continue with our presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joanna. Just flowing right into some of our community highlights as a result of our CBG and our special programming at the West Harlem Development Corporation includes our free rental space in collaboration with Columbia University for our in-kind programming. Now, this provides a free space for West Harlem-based nonprofits in West Harlem for public-facing community events. It allows applicants to submit an application the first full week of each month to be processed for use of space. We highly encourage these applicants to be West Harlem-based nonprofits, preferably with 501(c)(3) status, who are serving 75% of beneficiaries in Harlem. If anyone is interested in applying for in-kind programming space but is not fall within the criteria of being a nonprofit, we ask and strongly recommend. Profit, that they have a good relationship. They're very competitive, and they are promoted by West Harlem staff. And so we ask again that you make the description of your event or programming as descriptive as possible. Note that this is different from the Cozy Benefits Grants CBG application. However, as a CBG award recipient, you are eligible to submit an application for CBG-related programming with this program. For in more information on our in-kind, feel free to visit our website. And actually, we have some flyers in the back for those of you who are just. Patient looks like with QR codes. Following this, we'd like to share some information about our, about the Summer Youth Enrichment Program put on by the Boys and Girls Club of Harlem. This is for youth in the community. So if you know and have any youth or are serving youth as part of your programming or day-to-day, we ask you to share this information with them for an opportunity to apply for a paid summer internship program. For more information, you can visit the Boys and Girls Club of Harlem's website and our News and Opportunities page as well. We'd also like to announce the official incorporation of the West Harlem Older Adults Alliance, which initially started as an incubator of a few organizations and programs that serve older adults in West Harlem. We are proud to announce that this incorporation includes 14 programs, organizations that serve older adults and are still taking applications. So if you're interested in continuing the good work that this alliance has been doing, we ask you to reach out to the interim coordinator by the name of William Hamer. His email can be found right here, H A S H A R L E M at gmail dot com. We'd also like to share the publishing of our 2024 year in review. Every year, we go ahead and publish a catalog of the events that we sponsored and the list of CBG recipients. For more information and an in-depth look at this catalog, you are welcome to visit our website as well at westharlemdc.org. Here we have one of our 2024 grantees featured on the cover, who serve older adults in West Harlem by facilitating enrichment programs through dance called Dances for a Variable Population. Now, for those of you interested in finding out more information beyond these items, you are welcome to the. And further opportunities for your worship. We publish items under the categories of space rentals, i.e. our in-kind, or additional opportunities for that. Youth and individuals working in West Harlem, as well as jobs. If you guys have any jobs or opportunities available within your organization for members of the community to know. Now, this is another incubator of ours, the West Harlem Arts Alliance, who has some upcoming events we'd like to share with you all. This summer, we're happy to announce that the West Harlem Arts Alliance has a full lineup of outdoor free summer jazz concerts. For more information on that, you are welcome to visit their website at WHAA and we'll see you dot org. This year is the first year that the concerts are taking place in three major parks in Harlem. Oh, four, my apologies. Four major parks in Harlem, one of which we're featuring. And so I've personally attended. It's amazing. It's hard to get away from. So make sure you clear at least one day in your calendar to attend. For more information and to keep up with the events, we ask that you sign up for our newsletter and keep up with us on social media. We do update our website regularly, but for more recent and in-real-time update, we are available on Instagram and Twitter, as well as Facebook. That CBG info session that we mentioned earlier will actually be published on YouTube after the livestream is completed. So give us some time to post that as well. And we do have a newsletter also going out today, this afternoon. So if you don't want to miss out on the amazing information, we do ask that you go ahead and sign up for the newsletter between now and noon. Thank you. And for those of you, again, who might have missed the QR code for the CBG info session or any information about that, including guidelines, here is the QR code again. So please do scan that while you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. How's everybody doing? Fantastic. Just want to remind everybody to, this card for Harlem Arts Alliance, it's a way for us to stay in contact with you and also for you to tell us how you feel about the event. And so if you could fill these out, that'd be great. You'll find the cards in the back of the room and when you go outdoor here. So, yes. And now I'd like to invite up James Jerome Hayford, Principal of the Jerome Hayford Studio and Professor and Co-Director of Place Memory and Cultural Incubator at the City College Spitzer School of Architecture. Welcome.
Hello, everybody.
You can give a bigger welcome than that. Yes.
Hi, everybody. It's nice to be here and to see some folks and to meet and learn more about what everybody is doing. My name is Jerome Hayford. I am an architect and public artist. I work nationally, internationally, and here in Harlem on many things, mostly related to the Black and African diaspora. But I am also a professor at City College. And that is the hat that I'm wearing today. And I was invited by Boza and TJ and the New Heritage Theater to share about this project, which some of you may already know about, at the School of Architecture where I teach, which is the Place Memory and Culture Incubator Initiative. I'm also, by the way, a resident of Harlem. I live on 127 between Vinton Madison for the last 12 years with my husband. So, hi, everybody. And yeah, so I have, I trimmed it down. So I wanted to share more about this project. Hopefully, y'all can be aware of it, come to the events or other activations that we're doing with this initiative. And to reach out, my email is on the docket for today. And we have an Instagram that is pmciassa that I'll show in a minute. But we're in the second year. So this, and you can also go right to the City College Spitzer School of Architecture website and find out more about this. I'm at Spitzer. As a Black architect, there's only 2% of licensed architects are Black. And we're trying to put more architects of color into the city, into our community. And Spitzer's diverse schools, so that's why I decided to teach there. And I'm obligated to be there. And so now, a year and a half ago, we were invited and awarded this large grant to do a number of different things at the Spitzer School related to Harlem and to reinforce our ecosystem, which is how I met Boza and some other folks. And this is a little bit about the incubator. This, this support was given by Mellon through Justin Moore, in particular, the humanities in place in face of the ongoing urban transformation, but we're really using this as a way to do a few different things at the school to engage a kind of expanded idea of preservation and work with community members as we do. So these are the kind of four things that's going on that's nested into the School of Architecture. I'm co-directing this with our dean. But we're first and foremost engaging apartments and individuals in Harlem related to preservation or culture. We've also brought in some new faculty and staff to form a small team and really working again to kind of expand and celebrate different ways of doing preservation in Harlem and to change how we teach that. And I'm doing that with some new colleagues at the school. This is a list of folks who leave some organizations. Some of you are here in Harlem who are already sort of were in our network or folks that I knew and have worked with that we have, have engaged in some way, shape, or form, or are hoping to engage. This is ever-growing. We can't have robust partnerships with every organization or individual in Harlem. There's hundreds of them. But I'm here, and we really want, want to engage as many folks as we can. And this is a map of some of those who've been part of the first couple of years of this project. And this project is really focused around the kind of part of it of the studio curricula, which I have been looking at a number of different sites in Harlem, which I'll talk briefly about. This was a studio with students on 116th that was working with the Street Bender Project down there. And we began with a kind of revisiting of the Harlem African Burial Ground site, which many of you are obviously aware of, as this sort of ongoing system. Brought in some cultural practitioners to work with us at the school. And we co-hosted this panel with the BDC just a couple of weeks ago about the future of that site. Worked with folks like Frank O'Gaskin, Frank the Great, who many of you know, the sort of amazing artist who's been so central to 125th Street and did several different projects around his archive and that sort of living history. and that sort of living history on 125. And we collaborate with artists and we're looking to do more things with artists. So this was a local artist, based in Ant, who was doing some work with our Lennox curriculum and thinking about the preservation sites on Lennox. And then we've done a number of these sort of outdoor activations where the students and partners sort of present some projects related to specific sites. We just had one last week on 135th. I think I have an image of that. That was, yes, working with New Heritage Theater, working with The Harlem Is, and what is the other? With Barbara. And Eric Zibidl with Harlem Hospital, crews performed. So it was like part of the crew here and loser also as part of that. And also worked with the Schaumburg and the YMCA on 135th to really sort of begin some ongoing collaborations around the preservation and living history of 135. So go to our Instagram, that is the Instagram handle, pmci SSA, to really get a better sense of just some of the people, both again nationally and locally, who we're bringing in and having outward face in programming at the school. Again, I'll just kind of flip through. This is an image of the students. Again, these are mostly aspiring architecture and design students of color, which is not a common thing in a school of architecture. And we're really engaging them with our network, including folks like Boza, to learn more about Harlem and to do work together. We're being Cultural Center, Uptown Grand Central, and Maisel's, et cetera, et cetera. So reach out, follow the Instagram, go to the Spitzer School website to learn more. And hopefully, we get together. And I'm glad to share this project with you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Before I introduce the next person, I just want to say the women in the purple vests and the white shirts who's been handing out the cards and greeting you belongs to an organization called Grandparents Around the World. And I just want to give them their flowers, give them their flowers. The founder of it, her name is Yvonne Gillian Randolph. And she's a wonderful spirit. Every time Boza or TJ calls, she's like, "I'm there." And so I just want to make sure as we open it, that we gave everybody their flowers. Like really give them, like for real, for real. And so, and what I forgot to say, if this is your first time here, welcome. So now, I'd like to introduce the founder of the Uptown Stroll, Mr. Martin Collins.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
How you doing? Want to say welcome from the Northern Manhattan Arts Alliance. I'm Martin Collins, the Uptown Arts School Coordinator. We were in this building just three nights ago for a packed house, sold-out concert at the Harlem School of the Arts with Emmett Cohen, who lives just down the road here, and Grammy nominee Patrick Barclay. It was an absolutely spectacular evening. And Emmett has taken it, he recorded it, he's put it up on all social media platforms and on his website, you can watch it again, pieces of it. He's got everything captured from Tuesday night. It was just a wonderful, wonderful crowd. We had people sitting up there on the second floor. That's how packed the house was. The Uptown Arts Stroll, its 23rd year, will begin right here in West Harlem on Friday, May 30th, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the Sugar Hill Museum on 150 Fifth Street and St. Nicholas Avenue. We are honored to have the honoree, the headliner, Boza Rivers. Congratulations, Boza. We're going to honor you and all you do, and also honoring artist Carla Torres, who has studios in West Harlem and Washington Heights. Led Black for the Uptown Collective, Jeff Haba, and the Cornerstone Studio Collaboration, 16 artists up in Washington Heights. And those artists are from all three neighborhoods, Harlem, Washington. And finally, artist Danny Monia and the Riverside Inwood Neighborhood Garden, which is up in Inwood on Dyckman Street and Broadway. We invite you all to, cods are in the back on the table, and they also include all of the concerts we'll be having, including two in West Harlem during the strolls, Monday evenings in June, 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 38th. The Arts Stroll brochure this year is 72 pages. It's grown from 28 pages when I came back to work for Noma a decade ago to now 72 pages. It'll have some 250 events in West Harlem, Washington Heights and Inwood, 36 exhibitions, and it also will include three historic Harlem tours with renowned historian and Columbia Fellow John Reddick. We thank the West Harlem Arts Alliance for their partnership and collaboration on that. We also have coming up on June 11th at the Forum with the West Harlem Arts Alliance, our next professional development workshop for artists. Details about the event at the Forum on June 11th, which begins at 6:00 p.m., is on our website. Noma also has an online calendar, I wanted to share that with you. And we've got a lot going on, not what we do, but what all of you do. And the online calendar, you can just simply take 20 seconds to put date, time, place, and a brief description of what the event is that you're having, whether it's an exhibition, an open studio program. And we'll be happy to promote that in our weekly newsletter and across all social media platforms. I think that's it for me, and we look forward to seeing you all. That's next Friday, May 30th, from 6:00 to 8:30 at the Sugar Hill Children's Museum. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Now I'd like to invite up our partners from the Harlem Community Development Corporation. It's going to be two people, the president, and I love this guy's laughter, Mr. Curtis Archer, and the project manager, Yima Rose Oria. Welcome, welcome. And Wadi, you know I miss him, right? But I do not miss seeing that sign. I don't miss that. Yes, indeed, yes, indeed. I promise that we will not go over time. I'm Curtis Archer and this is Yima Oria. And a little bit of Harlem Community Development. How many of you guys know about Harlem Community? Hello? Okay, Wayne? You will hear about a grant program that he is responsible for. Yes, you are, and you know this, okay? Big time. But there were two important things that actually occurred from the expansion of Columbia University in West Harlem, aka Manhattanville. One of them was the capitalization and creation of a new nonprofit called what? West Harlem Development Corporation. You just heard from them, okay? They were capitalized in the tune of $76 million, right? Over a 16-year period. But also, oh my God, there was also the creation of the Community and Economic Revitalization Support Program, or SERPs, which Wayne is responsible for. And we were capitalized in the tune of $20 billion over a 24-year period. Okay, so Jerome, you know, you're not just small potatoes, but it's potatoes that are valuable to nonprofit organizations. You heard about that, nonprofit organizations. So you must be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, right? But also, you must be pre-qualified with what we call the statewide financial system, because we are indeed. Were you qualified? Yes. And did you receive some funding? Be impactful and intentional in what you do with that. I've been there now, as you know, for five governors. Both, yes, both my boys are graduates, so no more tuition, baby. Yes, indeed. And I would also say that, you know, when I first started, it was literally for one project. How many guys know that we own the Victoria Theater? What about the Olive Theater? See, Wayne, you know, don't cheat, you got the cheat code already. And the most important project to my wife is the National Urban League. She loves that. Why? Because now Boza, she has a Trader Joe's. Can you bring that?
Lucky her, lucky her.
That's right, that's right. And in addition, the birthplace of bebop, street ahead jazz is what? Own that as well. Okay, yes. So there are a lot of things. I would encourage you, check that card that I gave you, the back of it. You want to hit me up, okay? Because you talked about the Harlem African Burial Ground. There are two important R&amp;Bs that should be released by the city, and that's EDC. They want, one is a property that we all know, can't you say marked 125? Okay? And the other being the Harlem African Burial Ground. Which by the way, Jerome, we started a task force back in the day. Just want to get some props here now. But having said that, the most important project, significant person that I have is Yima. Yima, tell us about what we've got here.
All so much, and it's hard to follow with a voice like Curtis, so apologies in advance for my voice. But I do want to just go over one of our grant programs. So as Curtis mentioned, it's the Community and Economic Revitalization Support Program. It's a very big name, but it's a very big program, also known as SERPs. It's currently open, it's to serve nonprofit organizations, 501(c)(3) certified nonprofit organizations that are doing full work in Harlem. And we offer support in three different funding categories, as in project support, event support, and sponsorship support, or fundraiser support. So if you are a nonprofit organization doing work in Harlem and you'd like support in any one of those categories, this program is for you. To get more information on our program, I will show you all the website, but I do just want to highlight a few key points here. We have our grant program open annually. So that means that when we close on October 31st, that is in the end of our program, we'll open again the following year until the money runs out. And then, so if you unfortunately aren't prepared or you don't have a project event support that you'd like to apply for this year, we will reopen again next year. The grant program closes on October 31st. And my best practice, what I like to share with everyone, is make sure to apply as early as you can. If you know you have a project event or sponsorship support that's coming up this year that you'd like to request funding for, do it as early as possible. Best practice is 30 days, at least, you know, just to give us some time to review and process those. Last year, we had a record high number of applications.
Because of this, this forum opened it up. And Yima and I do these town halls, we do all, you know, we are in the community, talking about this program. And so going from, what, 69 at the most, to 105? Oh, yeah.
Exactly. So that's just to show that, you know, we're here to support as much as we can. But we also want to get the word out, especially to those that are newer organizations that may not know about this fund. Because, you know, we're specifically here to serve the Harlem community. This isn't, you know, citywide. If you're doing work in Harlem, this is the program for you. So, you know, if you know of anyone that may be interested in this, please also feel free to share the work. So, next slide here. One of the other key criterias for this grant program is that you must be pre-qualified with the statewide financial system. This is something new that happened, I believe it was January of last year. So we just want to make sure you all have that information, since that's sometimes, you know, where there could be some issue there because it's a separate process. We have nothing to do with obtaining pre-qualification status. That's all through another state entity. So I have the contact information. If you are looking to sort any of that out with them, best practice is also to go directly to EPFS, as they are the ones to better assist you. And then for our grant program, if you'd like to learn more, which I also highly, highly encourage you all to read the grant guidelines, which are on our website. So our website is the first link at the top, and then our SERPs webpage is the second link below. The grant guidelines are posted there along with the application. So yeah, definitely read through that first, because it has a lot of information, probably a lot of answers to your questions. And then of course, we're here if you have any other further questions that we can help you with. And then apart from the grant program, we also have a number of different programs at Harlem CDC. One of them is Small Business Services. And I just want to highlight some of the upcoming workshops that we have. So next week, we have a session on transforming your business into a memorable brand. That's on Wednesday, May 28th. And then on June 10th, we'll have a session on launching your online store. So this is, I hope, something that you all would be interested in, since I know we have a lot of entrepreneurs here that might want to sell your work online. This session is going to be a big hit only because our presenter is Maisha Walker. She is the founder of a very big digital marketing program called Message Media. And she is coming onboard to lead this workshop for us. So she also will, in this, I believe it's a 90-minute session, but after that, we'll give you information if you'd like to follow up with her, where she has a program where she can work with you one-on-one to build your store, you and her, and it's a really great opportunity. She's amazing. We've had tremendous feedback from all of the participants who sat in with Maisha. So you don't want to miss it. This is all on Zoom, and of course, all of this is free. So please be sure to check it out. Even if you just signed on for the first five minutes and then leave, we'll send you the recording after. So, you know, we hope that you're able to get, you know, some benefit from the information and knowledge that is shared by our presenters. And then lastly, on June 18th, we'll have a session on starting a restaurant in New York. So if that's of any interest to you, or anyone that you may know that is interested in that, please join our listener. The QR code is linked here in the presentation, and we'll send you those emails directly, so you won't miss the registration signups. Okay, and then finally, we have a big event coming up next week. This is in partnership with SCORE.
Service Corp. Retired Executives. This is the second annual, and it's not going to be at CCNY yet, Jerome, but we have something happening in July, don't worry, I'll tell you about that. And we also have flies in the back. But this will be at the Lee Bowler Center, 125th and what? And Broadway, right there on the corner. That's going to be happening on the 29th. Come through, it is free. But why is it free? Because, ah, yes, indeed, you got it right there, okay? Remember, you are your tax dollars at work. Okay, I'll take that serious. So you will never be charged for anything through Harlem Community Development Corporation. But on, let's say, July 12th, what's happening?
July 12th, we have a real estate expo. That's another one of our program areas, which unfortunately, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but that's all available online. And we also will have here some contacts. So if you want to reach out to the point of contact for the First Time Homebuyer Program, that is Pedro Hernandez. He also puts on these educational series periodically throughout the year. He will have one, I believe, coming up in June. So feel free to reach out or reach out to me. My name is Yima Oria, my email's at the top. I'm happy to work with you to talk more about anything that I just covered, any other of our programs, the SERPs program. Let me know, I'm happy to work with you one-on-one and to answer any of your questions. And then lastly, another program area that I just want to highlight very quickly is our MWBE certification. If you're interested in getting your New York State MWBE certification, we can help you with that. We're a subsidiary of Empire State Development. We are the state agency that leads that work. Again, this is all free, we can assist you with that. And EST launches new initiatives almost every month now to fast-track your application. So this month, in honor of AAPI Heritage Month, you are able to do that. If you would like more information, feel free to reach out to me or Brian. Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much, Boza and Harlem Arts Alliance. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for the swine thing. Thank you very much. Now let's welcome the Executive Director of Ice Theater of New York, Hubina Ribbons. Welcome in. How are you doing?
Morning. My name is Hubina Ribbons, and I wanted to thank TJ and Boza for bringing us into the fold of the Harlem Arts Alliance. Like Michael, one thing, I want to take a moment to do advocacy before I talk about my own organization. I'm a poll worker, and we need youth to come and become poll workers. Send them to vote.nyc and please ask them to help out. I mean, we are in dire need of help, and especially young people who can work on the tablet, and you know, it goes so much faster when they're young. All right, thank you. You put up the first one? Okay, all right. So we had our home season, so this is a very quick recap. And next slide, please. Oops, yeah, this is our group. So we had a wonderful performance downtown. And we are doing Bunny Ears in honor of Dick Button, who just passed away. I don't know if you remember, the broadcaster for ABC and two-time Olympic champion. So we were channeling his funny poem that he always had. Next slide, please. So Eric Botter came and gave us a proclamation. It was our 40th anniversary. Ice Theater of New York is an ice dance company, and I've been performing for over 40 years, including 31 years at Riverbank State Park. And next slide, please. Mr. Councilmember Salam came, and he had been also present at our holiday show, which I have flyers in the back, we'll save the date for December. And he was totally impressed with the way we had transformed the rink into a performance venue downtown. So he has asked us to do the same for next six months. So he has asked us to do the same for next holiday show up in Harlem. So we're going to try and we'll ask Harlem CDC and West Harlem Development and Councilmember Salam to help us transform the rink into a truly beautiful theatrical space. That's the plan. Here is a short clip now from our performance, just to give you a taste of what we did. So this young man we just watched, his name is Ilja Malinen, is from the Washington DC area. He's 20 years old and he is United States biggest chance for a medal at the next Olympics in Milan, in Italy, the Winter Games. He's pretty amazing. He calls himself the quad god. He does four and a half revolutions in the air. He is just absolutely amazing. All right, and I hope you will put in your calendar, December 13th, Saturday, December 13th, at four o'clock in Riverbank State Park for the winter holiday skating spectacular. And hopefully with a lovely theatrical setup and everything I work on.
Thank you. So now, I'd like to introduce two people from the Nova Frontier Film Festival. They're both co-founders, Billy Gerard Friend, who's a multimedia artist, and Lydia Darrell, who's an actress, model, and director.
Morning, everyone. I'm Billy Gerard Friend. And thank you so much Harlem Alliance for bringing us here to introduce the Nova Frontier Film Festival and everyone who is involved in organizing this. This is my co-founder.
I'm Lydia Darrell. Thank you for having us. We're super excited to be here. First time in Harlem, so you guys are not joking around here, I'm just like, let's say it, okay?
So the Nova Frontier Film Festival is an eight-year film festival. It was based in Brooklyn for the last seven years. And this year, we're bringing it to the Harlem Stage, June 5th to June 7th. We showcase films from the global African diaspora, the Middle East, Latin America. And the festival consists of films, panels, live music, performance, spoken word. It's a real experience of the regions that we represent. And we thought we'll also show you a trailer, which will give you a sense of the world we operate in. Can you play the trailer? Thank you. But exposed to the truth at a price. It's called exile. The trailer, buddy.
What's on my body today? So much secure, I check your alarm.
So the theme of the festival this year is freedom. And it's very timely, all the films that we play. And we're one of the few film festivals that you would see some of the films in places like Iran, that like women filmmakers. We also have a very strong selection of women filmmakers to say highlighting filmmakers in those particular regions as well. We also have a lab that teach filmmaking and media to young people in Brooklyn and also Harlem and beyond. We mentor them, give them opportunities to apply to film school. We were one of the first organization that created an elective for the public schools in filmmaking and media as elective. So you can get your tickets for the festival at Harlem Stage. Also follow us on novafrontierfilmfestival.com. And but we hope to see you there.
Thank you so much. Yes, we really hope to see you at the Harlem Stage. And I'm sure all of you know by now, because you're in Harlem. For us, it's really important to move the festival here. Always, you know, in, with a vision to really be able to attract those regions that we're presenting, Latin America, Middle East, and the African diaspora. Billy and I started this festival eight years ago because we both came here as immigrants. I was born and raised in France, my origin are from Guadalupe in the Caribbean. And Billy is from Grenada. And we felt the need to really create this festival to a platform to those filmmakers and those films that we will not necessarily see in other film festivals. So please spread the word, we're going to have amazing panel discussion, live music from Africa, Middle East, and spoken word. And it's going to be a really unique event, so hopefully we see you there. Thank you so much. Program is available online at harlemstage.org or novafrontierfilmfestival.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to welcome the President of Alitia's Original Artworks, Alitia Brand.
Greetings. I'm thinking my energy up, Wadi. You can't rewind the video? Ambition wears like a dual blade, cutting the spirit of the frail, fueling the soul of a warrior. I choose the pathway of the ladder. In celebration, I reflect more than a tripling of decades. Thankful in the now, that royal school assignment laced with rhythms sent me into my. It's what I am, the visionary of AOA. A black and white story, colorfully woven, worthy of creating visual truths. Artfully transitioning lived experiences through images delivered to eyes, minds, and ears. Traveling through my spine, a connectedness for my soul. I move colors, naming my creations. You call them, it is a perfect. Soft and raspy moans, reaching points where the art becomes finished, done. When it starts speaking back to me. In art, flaws are beautiful accidents, getting justice, being framed, published, archived, leaving footprints. As AOA, demonstrating commitment creatively, culturally, spiritually. This be the ultimate test. I took a vow, a surrender, honoring the journey, speaking in a visual language. Blessings conjoined with lived stresses, cultural amnesia, brushing my identity into existence despite erasure. I speak artfully, dripping hues, textured cues, filling spaces with messages. Depicting stories with truth, I adorn children of all ages, sweeping across skins with a soothing sensation of vibrational wonder. I am a verbal painter, sinked in. Eliminate light-filled pollutions. Art is the solution. It remedies poisoned energy, color, visual stories, quietly remove thoughts, not serving you well. In a New York moment, in a New York moment, I am still. Color and time reimagine the ultimate celebration, billboard recognition seven times over. AOA embodies creativity, mind, spirit, thought, frame, flowing, uncontained like liquid. I'm in it artfully, period. Listeners dwell on what benefits you. There's longevity and honoring to what lifts your frequencies. My creations resting on walls before you or teaching sessions that I bring with layered thoughts, gifting you the how-to tools. It affords a freedom using your imagination far beyond a pretty picture. Art has purpose. There are beautiful details embedded when life be lengthened, I go deeper. Warriors have strength, but still get wounded. Then retreat to repair, valiant when returned. Why does I take new direction? Solving problems late into the night whilst most souls are at rest part of the journey. This journey offers a delicious conversation, often gracefully engaging. Definitely requires the weight of patience. Left-handed, selective, divinely filled with vision. Art is my ministry, a visual and verbal testament, question only. Art grabs me, there is beauty in one breath, being there, being here. Such the test. This much-needed pivot, filled with new beginnings, aim for the things, morphing, releasing new air into my lungs. I've got a new space, y'all. Join me, AOA Art Studio, open May 9th, 2025. In celebration, 36 years of professional journey, art-worthy, art-ready. And tonight, I will be up the hill from here at the Children's Art Carnival, celebrating my 36th anniversary professionally. So it's an art workshop for the adults to have fun and enjoy some music, some refreshments, some creative masterpacing. Come join me, I will lead you.
Let's give it up for Alitia one more time here. I love your work, Alitia, it's so beautiful. And every time I hear you speak, I feel like I'm being seen, you know, warriors. Must retreat to you, I love that. Yes, so coming up next is trumpeter Tyrone Brquette. Give him a welcome.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, good morning. Good morning. My name is Tyrone Brquette, saxophonist and composer. I'm presenting my project, Azusa, revisited. That's my band, Tyrone Brquette, Emancipation. This project was inspired by ecstatic and spiritual Azusa Street revival in Los Angeles in 1906. A spiritual awakening not channeled through Eurocentric practice, but exhibited modes of expression that proceeded from African culture. The project is based on how in this gathering, the participants exhibited no regard for the patriarchy, segregation, or greed of its time. One reason why I took upon this project is that you saw the music. It was a synthesis of jazz, Harlem jazz, Harlem, and also a synthesis of the church, Harlem church. So I called that Joy to Strength, because I felt that we really needed to have focus on those principles that really helped us to get through times like we're going through now in the past. So what I'm doing is really making a contemporary attempt to bring back things from the past. San Kofa, bring things from the past into our present time, so that we can get strength. So this, this movement was led by a black man, William Seymour. And he was a one-eyed black man in 1906. And through their ritual. It was happening at the time that was oppressive. You can come and be a part of this development. Anybody can come and be a part of this community. In terms of sexism, I think out of the 12 leaders, at least five of them were women. White, black, brown, yellow, and from this movement, it spread out into the world. Also, in terms of dealing with segregation and dealing with greed, what happened at that time is similar to what is happening now. Where you have the billionaires that are like Christians that were supposed to be helping as opposed to enforcing these oppressive policies that we see just enacted this week. So I felt that with the music, I said, it's something that I have to make and I have to assign myself to bring out what these people are talking about. And again, in terms of political situation. The leader of, William Seymour of this movement, in one of his sermons, he actually preached that it is not good for people to have too much and for people to have, other people to have nothing. He said that, that makes no sense. He said that, that makes no sense. And, and something that is very different than what we see in our religious institutions now. He said, don't even bring money to the church. He said, give the money to the people that need it. Don't give it to the church, give it to people that actually need it. The people that are actually starving, the people that are actually trying to make their way. So because of that, the, uh, the movement grew and grows and continues to grow today. If you see a church in Harlem and you see them having this type of worship where it's very exuberant, you know, people are, are practicing their religion and they're running around and they're doing. When you see that, that comes from this actual movement. And the reason why I wanted to really connect that to jazz, because the same thing that we have in jazz, by improvisation and having that freedom to create and express our souls, is the same thing that I experienced when I was in the black church. And I helped to, that helped me to make that bridge between improvisation and the sense of jazz and coming from that African experience. And then in black church music coming from that same experience and seeing that same freedom. And that is what really ignited me to say, something must be done as an artist to address oppression that's trying to crush us, that's trying to keep us back, that's trying to keep us down. You saw Joy and Strength? I'm sure that made you happy. That's what's important. If you want to reach me, because I'm out of time. If you want to reach me, you can reach me at Instagram at, at sign newfreedomsongs.com. You can go to newfreedomsongs.com on the web. You can talk to me afterwards. And thank you again for your Harlem Arts Alliance, both thank you for your support. Thank you for those that came out to our concert a few weeks ago. All right, man, Luther, thank you, man. Y'all came, y'all turned it out. We had a good time there. So follow me at newfreedomsongs.com on Instagram. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome the curator for the absolute necessary Uptown Art Gallery pop-up, Kathleen Campbell. Give her a welcome, y'all.
Morning, everybody. I'm going to show a video, thank you, that has most of the details of what I want to talk about. But I'm giving just a little bit of background information for those who didn't see my previous presentation. The call to the artists, where I got artists from having presented at the Harlem Arts Alliance. So I thank you very much to Rosa TJ. So the background information that you would need to know about our first exhibit at our pop-up gallery is that the exhibit, the name of the exhibit and the inspiration, the theme is called Maestra Vida, which is based on a masterpiece two-part album by the Latin musical genius, his name is Ruben Blades. Maestra Vida, yes, okay. Maestra Vida translates roughly to School of Life. And School of Life has two meetings. One School of Life that everybody learns as they go along. You're sometimes very surprised by how much more you think of, you know, your perspective changes as a mature person as opposed to earlier. And also to give props to learning outside of academic institutions. The chorus of Maestra Vida is, life gives to you and takes from you, gives and takes from you. So if we could play the video, please. First, I want to thank Rosa, Temple G, and the entire Harlem Arts Alliance community for supporting me as I launch this pop-up gallery. This is an uptake to a concept that I first introduced at Harlem Arts Alliance Town Meeting two months ago. Process of turning this raw space from a vacant store into the absolutely necessary Uptown Art Gallery pop-up. This pop-up gallery is made possible through the generous support of the Community League of the Heights plus a special contribution by Brooklyn Art Schools. I found two of the artists at first Maestra Vida exhibit, directly as a result of presentations at the Harlem Arts Alliance. Shemona Emmanuel, I make jewelry, I'm an artist, a host of authors, and Janet Stewart, who are collages, I do paintings, I do drawings, uh, I do estambulage, you name it, I do. Uh, I get very good time to do an art. I invite you to the Artist Talk this Saturday, May twenty-fourth, from one to four P M. at twenty-one eighty-five Amsterdam Avenue between one sixty-eighth and one sixty-ninth. These are just a few of the great artists in this exhibit.
Hi, I'm Ana Belinda, photographer, Puerto Rican, and I'm very excited to be here at the exhibition Maestra Vida. For me, it represents resistance within our community. Uh, particularly, this is the one Mohawk. If we can over his head, we can written on his head. And it represents the Mexican identity, which some may say is resistance here in the diaspora, um, the United States and in Puerto Rico as in here, as here in New York. We are still resisting lack of organization.
Hi, I'm Louie Grant Cooper from Harlem. I'm a fellow object estambulage artist. I work with things I find and turn them into something that would not intend to be. I started doing art in twenty oh eight.
Uh, hi, I'm Jenny Strachey. My piece is called The Space of Memory. It's a multimedia textile art piece that explores, uh, memory, what we remember, what we forget, how memories shift or change over time.
Hi, my name is Nadine Brown. I graduated last year, I'm a student of college, I'm in the Bay. This is my painting on Tohino. It's about rebirth and all the things that are coming up after my graduate degree. I'm originally from Harlem, born and raised. Yeah, it's very exciting to meet you.
You're talking about the dream?
So in this dream, I was around my family and friends and everyone around me was so shocked and scared for me. Tell them, man, it's on fire, time to cut off. It was a very calm, sweet moment. Um, I painted this the next day and it's something I feel is today, just feels so personal. Um, it is leaving inside of me, it was so fun.
Hi, I'm Shavon. I am a multimedia artist for Harlem. Uh, I currently paint and draw, uh, things and, uh, so it's a really beautiful, like, I'm a little bit of a sculptor, like, I'm a wood. Um, and yeah, I know this lot of art around the club, with me and family, uh, and myself together. And this piece is, uh, I'll be sending for myself when I was coming to the local winters and trying, um, in college, and it is about a forever, uh, growing up and being in spaces where you are always seen or heard. Uh, just, you know, as a place that you fix yourself up from those moments with good to the heart. Um, being in those conditions, uh, really gives you the chance to grow and it's a beautiful thing. Um, you know.
Looking forward to seeing you at the Artist Talk for the absolutely necessary Uptown Art Gallery pop-up. So once again, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I'd like to introduce the founder of the Kitty Rose Lifestyle, Kitty Rose.
Oh, good morning, family. Um, Roddy, my production partner. Oh, that drew me. I guess it's the resin from the first system I presented, so, um, I'm going to take a statement from one of the other presenters about what the house saw. Last meeting, when I was doing the video for, uh, our presentation, one of the presenters was like, oh, you do film as well? So to those that don't know, the Kitty, the Kitty Rose Lifestyle, I wear ten hats. I'm a minister, I'm a mom, I'm a mentor, I'm a TV producer, I'm a filmmaker, I'm a facilitator, I'm a director, I'm an activist, and yes, I am a social commentator and a media host. I implement change with transparent ways of informing communities of local views and appealing to people's sense of spirituality, of spirituality, empowerment, and love with unity. By providing coverage of events and issues, I create a sense of belonging and pride, which gives folks a greater sense of community and well-being towards change. So I wanted to show you guys a video about that work. And if you guys are looking for hosts and commentators to host your events this summer, please think of the Kitty Rose Lifestyle and the Mystic Cat. You guys can wait, turn now my light for a little bit, please? Yes. So you guys can get the full impact of my video and enjoy. This is your girl Kat from the Kitty Rose Lifestyle. You hope they're happy, yeah?
One of our honorees today is a beautiful, glamorous, you already know her, I don't even have to tell you her name. Hey, everyone, it's your girl Kat back at the Ross Night Market. This is how we start, we need to say hello. And you put some, this is how I come, the thorns are on the leaves, the boy that's with us. So when I played you the Neo Lord, y'all, it reminded me of having no feet and shaking things up so that you can see that we're all reflections of each other. Stop that because, all right, I'll give you an example, like, the little thing that I feel like they're like. They're feeling our spirit, uh, the not trusting, that inner trust, that third eye, that God's in your stuff. What do you want us as a community to know about? Well, we have to individually in order to avoid coming to your court, bro, man.
Well, what I can tell you is, just man, what should you do? Can couples have friends of the opposite sex? Um, so, so, so people who are in relationships can absolutely have, um, colleagues, workpeople, comrades, and all of the like that are of the opposite sex.
Such a positive evening, I'm going to keep that. But just one another realistic point of view. Ten years ago, you paid my family because you scored the strength of, of what an election puts you in the strength of the power of people.
So yes, please. So please, this is who you are. I want to take my last moment to thank always the Harlem Arts Alliance for, uh, putting this meeting together each month and allowing us to come together as a community. Always my love to Rosa and TJ. And just on another one last note, I didn't get a chance to tell you guys, but as an activist, when I visited Africa in October of twenty twenty-four, I visited an orphanage called the Good Samaritan Children's Orphanage in Kenya, Nairobi. And with that visit, I have now become one of their United States Ambassador. And we just sent sixty pairs of glasses to the orphanage last month, um, donated from a high school here in Harlem that I was able to give to this orphanage that is twenty years old. So I would love for you guys to continue to support me online at my, online at Miss Kitty Rose One and see the journey of the community activism that I do, that I'm involved in, that Harlem Arts is involved in with me, and continue to be a part of the change that we want to see. Thank you, guys.
Really beautiful. Thank you, Kitty. Yes. So once again, I just want to let everybody fill out one of these things. You can have them in the back or when you leave this afternoon. And I want to say thank you. We got, uh, one more number for you. But thank you for everybody who's here and who helps base for each other. I really appreciate that. I'm going to invite back, uh, to close this out in song. Um, this gentleman, he won the Apollo Amateur Night. That's no easy feat, you know? So let's give it up, Cruz Angel. Yes, sir.
Before we close out, um, there's a project that, that we've been working on, meaning the we as New Heritage Theater and Community Works. And it's called Harlem is Music Alive. And, uh, we're going to be joining with Joyce Adamume, our Nigerian ambassador and member of the Harlem Arts Alliance. So in honor of Black Music Month on June the sixteenth, we will be at Harlem Hospital Center with a presentation that also buttresses her New York African chorus ensemble. And our featured artists will be the next, uh, the next performance by Mr. Cruz Angel. We have flyers on the back, uh, for this event on June the sixteenth during Black Music Month, Harlem is Music Alive. Angel, it's your show. Alethea, I need to thank you again. That's how we discovered this young man, through Alethea. Uh, she saw him at the Apollo Theater one first place. And he, uh, came to us. Alethea said that we needed to showcase some of the young men that exist in our community. And this was a gift. He is now also an active member of the Harlem Watch Alliance. We're cheering back. And, uh, and, and, and we're working together. We just mentioned the Community Works event, it's on June sixteenth. But you'll see more events with him. He is a consummate artist, um, and he's very, very serious about his craft. And I'm just so happy. One of the things for me, um, a number of years ago, I headed up the Apollo Theater Record Label. And it was my task on, uh, Wednesday nights to go to Amateur Night to see who the winners were and to offer them, if I thought they were good, a recording contract. And if they were good and they didn't have management, Percy Sutton and I, we had an artist management called Apollo Theater Artist Management. And so we had two streams of what was happening. One, we would see artists who were very good, just like Cruz, and we would offer them a recording contract. Or we would see an artist like Cruz who had no representation, and we were there to see that. I, um, I, I, I'm reflecting back on that because when I see him and when I'm around him, he reminds me of the great talent that came off of the stages of the Apollo Theater. And for us, we're receiving a gift every time you see this young man perform. And I just wanted to say again, Cruz, thank you, thank you, thank you. Also, we have offered complimentary membership to all who attend our meetings that will last until the end of the year because we want to expand the family, we want all of you to feel that you're a part of the family. So there's a form in the back. Uh, if you have not, uh, filled it out, please do. We want to show a community of like-minded people who put H for Harlem as an important destination. And the work that you guys do collectively and individually helps, uh, maintain Harlem as a cultural capital to a black America. So again, I want to thank you. The next town hall meeting will be June twenty-third, right here. Thank you. Oh, we're going to, all of the presenters are presented, we're going to come forward and group picture together. Thank you.
May get all the presenters up front, please. May have all the presenters up front, please. May get all the presenters up front, please.
Can I put you to work?
Put it on.
Can you take a picture of you for me?
When I see earrings like this, I just... And like, I grabbed tears when I was in the short hair, so I'm just saying, it's very... I need to blow. Thank you. Well, the community that I'm working with, um, I'm the vice chair of Parks and Recreation. I have an daughter, who falls through, like, uh, she comes here. I'm trying to be an actress, so eventually I'm going to be a manager. I gotta speak to her. Not yet, um, I'm just like... I can't, like, yeah, I'm not like, like, actually, like... But I've been in, like, before, you're... First, last, and very rare.
Reach out.
They told him, well...
He was reading hard, yes. I'll, I'll put you in. Yeah, that's how I... At least right now, that's like getting your life right.
I think I'm also very...
No, yeah, um... You know, you're... So, so, I...
Oh, I'm, I'm moving out. See, I'm loving, I'm loving too. It's your age, you're telling me, like, very, like, right, but back. How, it's not like me. You're living out of the truth.
Right. So, so, okay, alright, right.
So, so, such a meeting is that her daughter is part of the team. All about to watch. As a big part of... Like, point. Of the best book that he...
Oh, some way, like, yeah. I'm baby. I was just getting ready to come over here to sing, but then when you... And she, she goes, there's like... Oh, no. You can't, oh my... Oh, you know, it's horrible, my... That was your baby. There too. Five seventy-three, three zero. Baby. Cheer. Yeah. No, no, I gave it to you. Baby, it's for you, right, girl. I don't know, right? Okay. I was in Los Angeles, like, the rain going ninety-five, like, here. That's your best. Yeah. You heading out in town? No.
So funny. I was laughing in the bathroom about you. That's not my bathroom. Because I had loved to be in, I said, oh, I see he's talking, I'm gonna go get his bath. Hey, guess who's taking one? I finally, it's wet over here. Oh, my goodness. Or you. Yes, oh, my goodness. That's how good the baseball, though, that any of the layers really need. That's how good the baseball, though, that any of the layers really need. Thank you. Yeah, I'm back for you. Oh, no. Sound great playing, let's do it, yes. Oh, my man. Oh, no, no. Really. Oh. Did it happen to you? Ah, stop pushing.
Just want to say, everybody. Y'all keep it real, so, uh, just wanted to say. Thank you all for watching. Thanks for tuning in. Make sure that you go over to our friends on the Harlem Mars Alliance. You should see the tag in the chat. Over there and subscribe to the channel. Like, I need all of y'all that come in and tune in to go over to the Harlem Mars Alliance channel. And make sure that you add that sub to the Harlem Mars Alliance channel. All of my people, I'd like to say thank y'all all for rocking with me. Supporting and thank y'all for sub-supporting our friends over there. Wanna check out now? I will catch up with y'all. And yes, I will be back for everything else. Sorry I've been away for so long, but. You know what it is? Carter out, always Carter approved. Oh, no problem, darling. You know how we do it.